You guys ready? That's it, everybody? Here we go. Good evening, everybody. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of Socorro Independent School District. It's to be held today, Tuesday, August 16th, 2022, beginning at 6 o'clock. At this time, we do, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Let me call a tour. And we do have Elias Rojas, a sixth grader from Herschel and Twine Middle School. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Okay, item number three, Superintendent's comments, Dr. Carmen.
Well, good evening, President Mena, members of the board, and also to our Socorro ISD community. We have a few board members celebrating birthdays this month. Mr. Nahera, not here, but he celebrated his birthday yesterday, August 15th. And Mr. Mena will be celebrating a birthday next week, August 21st. I want to wish you both a very happy birthday. Also have some personal introductions for some of our new leaders in Socorro ISD. I'd like to welcome Nancy Torres as the new principal of America's High School. I'd also like to welcome Mr. Samuel Sacerdo as the new Assistant Principal of H.D. Hilli Elementary. I'd like to welcome Brendan Mendoza as the new Assistant Principal of Sergeant Jose Carrasco Elementary School. I'd like to welcome Bianca Lacerio as the new Assistant Principal, Manuel R. Puente's Middle School. And I'd like to welcome Robert Norton as the new Assistant Principal of Eldorado High School. Just a real short comment this evening. I want to announce that Saturday before school started, the board and I were invited to tour and see the status of the new construction of Socorro High School. And those of us that could make it were led by the contractor and the architect representatives through the campus. I was happy to see that the improvements at Socorro High School are on schedule. The improvements are very impressive and will truly give our students, faculty, and staff amazing opportunities and exceptional learning environments. The areas for the career and technical education classes, such as the EMS ambulance, the dental area, barbering and cosmetology classrooms, and the automotive shops, just to name a few, are awesome. The fine art spaces, theater, band room, and dance room, as well, are just top-notch professional spaces. I am pleased and proud of the beautiful modern facilities that are being built to serve generations of Socorro High School Bulldogs. Thank you to our SISD facilities and planning team and our DSC support staffs for ensuring that this project is being completed on time and with all the amenities our students and staff deserve. This concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Carmen. We will now move to Board Honors presenter, Daniel Escobar.
Good evening, President Mena, members of the board and Superintendent Dr. Carmen. My name is Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer for the district. And it is my pleasure to introduce tonight's recognitions. If you all please step down to receive our honorees. Our first recognition honors a Montwood High School student for being selected as a 2022 Bank of America Student Leader. He was one of two students selected from El Paso and one of 300 students selected from across the U.S. for the program. As part of the national program, the Montwood senior participated in a paid internship with the Boys and Girls Clubs of El Paso over the summer where he gained valuable leadership skills. He also attended the Virtual Leadership Summit with other student leaders and worked collaboratively on mentor-focused projects, which enabled him to gain workforce skills, leadership experience, and civic engagement. Congratulations to this outstanding Montwood High School student, Emilio Jackson. Emilio, if you'll please return to the front for a photo with the board and our superintendent. And just a quick note that the photos taken by Mr. Largo here are posted on the district webpage where they're available for free high-resolution download. Congratulations once again. Our next recognition highlights students who represented the Socorro Independent School District at the Education in Action's Summer 2022 Lone Star Leadership Academy Camps. These outstanding students were nominated by their teachers last year for the statewide leadership program. These students were among 800 students from across Texas to be selected for the program. The students traveled to Dallas-Fort Worth, Austin-San Antonio, and Houston-Galveston to take part in the camps. During the week-long overnight camps, the distinguished students developed leadership skills while learning about the great state of Texas. Congratulations to these future leaders. They are, yes. Currently a student at Eldorado High School, Danica Navarete. From Socorro High School, Eliab Rojo. From Jane A. Hambrik School, Valerie Chavez. From John Druigan School, Annabelle Richardson. Also from John Druigan School, Sebastian Carillo. From Montwood Middle School, Evelyn Rojas. From Montwood Middle School, Isabel Lopez. From Montwood Middle School, Marisca Valdez. And from Sergeant Jose F. Carrasco Elementary, Delilah Fuerte. If we can have you all back to the front, please, for a photo. If you all look right center at Mr. Largo, right here in the middle. Keep smiling, keep smiling, certificates back up. Almost there, almost there. Congratulations once again. That concludes our recognitions for this evening, thank you.
Okay, now we will move on to open forum. And with that said, I need to read this first. Okay, guys. Here we go. "The district is a local government body charged with serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren in our district. And board meetings must be focused on meeting this charge. The district board meetings are public meetings under the Texas Open Meetings Act to conduct the business of the district. They are not, however, meetings of the public, therefore, all persons in attendance are expected to display civility and decorum. Individuals shall refrain from using harmful and offensive content, i.e. libel, slander, defamation, obscenities, fighting words, for the respect and the rights and reputations of others. We greatly appreciate those individuals who have requested to speak to the board during open forum or in regards to a specific agenda item. We are bound by certain time constraints in order to cover all items on this agenda and therefore must limit presentation to five minutes. Please respect the rights of others in your presentation. By law, the board cannot take action upon or discuss any item which is not posted on tonight's agenda. But we will give all presentations our serious consideration. Thank you, let's proceed to open forum." Our first speaker is Veronica Vargas.
Good evening, President Mena, members of the board, Dr. Carmen. My name is Veronica Vargas. I'm the at-risk instructional aide at Waco Elementary and the proud Vice President of West Texas Alliance Union. As we're all aware, there's a national shortage of hourly staff members and teachers. In accordance with applicable laws and regulations, schools should allow flexible, non-punitive, and supportive paid leave policies and provide the recommended five-day of isolation. If an employee tested positive for COVID-19, employees of our district could be affected by COVID or any other worldwide illness that may impact their income. Following our district Policies and Employee Procedures Reference Manual, which was last revised May 20th, 2022, it highly encourages sick employees to stay at home. This should not cause the employees of our district to fear loss of pay. Many of our school employees may not have any available sick days due to caring for an ill family member and/or a child. Employees of our district could be faced with a dilemma of zero days to take care of themselves if they contract COVID or any other infectious disease. Unfortunately, this leads employees to returning to work sooner than recommended and transmitting the illness to others. There are many ways a district can curtail the spread of COVID-19 and other illnesses. We could provide COVID illness days to all district employees so they may quarantine and fully recover. We're aware that Mr. Gerda has placed an item on the agenda tonight regarding emergency leave. We do not know the specifics of this proposal. If it helps in this matter, we highly encourage you all to support this measure. We could also ask that employees follow the same district employee protocols even if they seek medical assistance outside of our district clinic. We could also continue our daily disinfecting of desks, tables, and enhanced cleaning and disinfectant of classrooms. Our schools should ensure that all employees and families are aware of and understand attendance policies concerning their illnesses. And if there are not aware waivers, there are not any waivers being submitted for attendance this year. We must continue to provide support to our children that due to their illness may not attend school. Last year, our students were given assignments on proximity to support their learning at home. We're asking you to please consider having this or any similar program that can be provided to our students. Thank you very much."
Thank you. Our next speaker is Margarita Parra.
Good evening, President Mena and Superintendent Dr. Carmen and members of the board. I am Margarita Parra. I am a proud bus driver of Socorro ISD Transportation. Over the past few weeks, our department has been in news for things that are not very pleasant to hear. We understand that incidents happen, but we do everything in our power to come to accountability from all of us, to ensure that we are doing our jobs. Accountability means we are liable for anything or anyone entrusted to us, and we take that job very seriously. Accountability means we are liable for anything or anyone entrusted to us. It means that we must conduct ourselves professionally and do everything to the best of our abilities. I have been a part of this department for many years. I have friends in other districts, and I know by far we are in the best district transportation department in the region. We have 45 new buses coming in, in the district in the few months, and we hope they get here soon because our staff, our buses, everyone is really being spread thin, and we are all doing the best we can. We have been given a significant raise, and we have been given bonuses just for being employees. And we have a positive collabora, I can't talk right now, relationship with our district administration and school board members that are willing to listen to our comments and our ideas and concerns. Are there things that need to be corrected, implemented, or changed? Yes, there are. Are there things we can improve upon in our district and in our department? Yes. Can we work together to get it all done? Yes. As the district moves forward to correct these things, we must remember that we are and will always be transportation strong. Our department has been stepping up and stepping in for our district even during the pandemic. We build relationship with students throughout the years. We are the first to greet our students when they begin their day, and we are the last ones to see them after a day of learning, playing, and growing. We must remember all of these, all of this, and keep our focus on our students. At the end of the day, we, when people and procedures are changed, when ideas are implemented, and when we are called to do jobs outside of our duties, we must never forget that we do it for our students. Ensuring their safety and well-being to and from school is our priority as we move forward. Let us always remember that we do all these things for the kids. We are transportation strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parra, thank you. Our next speaker is Jaime Martinez.
Good evening, President Mena, members of the board, Dr. Carmen. I guess I'll just do what the lady said, right? First and foremost, I come here as a parent to comment on, like she mentioned, on the recent issues that have plagued our district in a very negative way in regards to the bus incidents and videos that are surfing, social media and so forth. And it's very saddening that as a former district employee for 16 years, you know, that it's out there, and we become the target of the media, unfortunately. Having that said, unfortunately, this is not the first time that it happens in our district. As far as I remember, we had the same incident last year of the same nature. So, which brings me to the next thing. Nothing has changed since last year. I mean, we continue to have the same problems, and it is important, like she mentioned, accountability. I mean, we have teachers in the class, in this room, we have administrators in this room, and we're all held accountable. Right, administrators are held accountable, what's happening in their campuses. Teachers are held accountable, what happens within the classrooms. And people should be held accountable. We are, as board members, we're held accountable too because we represent the community. And we need to stop and listen to what the community is saying. We need to stop and remember why we ran for the board. Because we wanted to represent the community, we wanted to do what's best for kids. Having that said, we should hold people accountable, whether it's in transportation or whether it is in other departments, to include the police department. It is completely wrong and uncalled for to drop off a child in the wrong place. And I kind of think about it, you know, it's a young child being dropped off in the wrong place. What was this, what was going through his mind? And as a parent, and a lot of us up here and in the room are parents, what was going through our parents' minds? I mean, these are things that they're uncalled for, and like I mentioned earlier, people should be held accountable. We must also do a better job to putting, continue putting systems in place. Just like we're holding accountable our directors, I know our bus drivers are doing an amazing job. And like the lady mentioned, we're shorthanded across the region, across the state. So keeping that in mind, right? What systems do we need to have in place where this doesn't happen anymore? Because it's already happened twice, and we hope it doesn't happen again. Based on those videos that we saw that are surfacing in social media, those buses were super crowded. Have you ever thought and think, what would have happened if we would have had an accident? We would have been in very serious legal problems, right? We don't want that. We want to be proactive, we don't want to be reactive. Unfortunately, from what I'm seeing is we're being reactive to the situation. Hopefully, we can take a better stance and be proactive and not have the same issues again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Our next speaker. Our next speaker is Darlene Renteria.
Good evening, President Mena, members of the board, and Dr. Carmen. My name is Darlene Renteria, and I am a pre-K teacher at Waco Elementary and a proud board member of West Texas Alliance. We would like to take this opportunity to thank you for listening to our concerns and doing what is always best for our district. As we continue to be the highest innovative district in the region, we must provide the highest standards of safety protocols. This evening, I would like to address concerns my colleagues, parents, and I have regarding COVID-19, flu, cold seasons, and other illnesses. We understand the importance of having our students in school. Indeed, our schools are an important part of the infrastructure of our communities as we provide a safe, supportive learning environment for all of our children. We also provide critical services that help us to mitigate health disparities, such as school lunch programs and social, physical, behavioral, and mental health services. Our schools play a critical role in promoting health in our community. We ask that we continue to promote this by demonstrating to our families, teachers, and staff that comprehensive prevention strategies must remain in place. This will continue to help us keep students, staff, families, and school communities safe. It will provide supportive environments for our in-person learning. For this to be done correctly, we must understand the risks of those around us and ourselves. Having proper protocols in our district provides informed decisions to keep everyone safe and healthy. We could be a beacon of public health by strongly recommending our schools continue washing hands, using hand sanitizers when soap and water are not easily available, and that each school is continually disinfected regularly. Specifically, we should focus in disinfecting our classrooms. We should also strongly recommend staying home if experiencing symptoms of respiratory or gastrointestinal infections, which is what we're starting to see with our young population, such as cough, fever, sore throat, vomiting, or diarrhea, as recommended by the CDC. Many of our campuses have three-year-olds and four-year-olds who might or might not have been fully vaccinated against SARS-CoV-2. We should give special consideration on layered prevention strategies that are the most suitable for our young children and our high-risk population. We would like to give a special thank you to Mr. Barrera and to Mr. Mena for being proactive and advocating for our PPEs in all of our schools. Though preventive actions and a district safety protocol for, a protocol guide for parents, teachers, and staff, and community members can help, we must prevent, I'm sorry, through preventive actions and a district safety protocols for parents, teachers, staff, and community members, we can help prevent the spread of diseases and support a healthy learning environment. Thank you, and we hope you do help us with this.
Thank you, Ms. Renteria. Our fifth speaker is Mr. James Brown.
Good afternoon. I guess I timed it just right, I actually just got in off of my route. I just want to kind of address something. This is something that has been kind of troubling me for quite a while. And I've kind of voiced it a few times before, and I've gotten a few chuckles about this, but you know, it's just something that's just really concerning. Now, for those that know me, they know I've been in transportation for a while, but a lot of people don't know how long I've been doing this, they kind of look at me as I'm a newbie, but this is my 33rd year in transportation. I started as a monitor at age 14. I started as a student worker with the Isleta Independent School District as a TA. And it just goes on from there, this is my 28th year behind the wheel. But this is something that has been just really concerning to me. So for me tonight, I'm not looking at whether I'm representing AFT, WTA, or any alliance. I'm coming as a member of the Transportation Department. My question I've got to ask is this, and I'm a little off-script because I left my little script in my car, so I'm just a little nervous. But the question that I happened to ask the other day when we had our meeting over in the Transportation Department is, when are we going to start holding some of our parents accountable for some of the things that happen? When are we going to start holding our administrators for some of the things that happen? Case in point, today. I had the school put two children on my bus that did not belong there. Thank you, the silence is golden. But when then something goes wrong, it's the evil bus driver. It's the evil bus monitor. That's at fault. Then what happens? We get chucked underneath the bus like nothing ever happened. And that's concerning. Yesterday, we had a debacle with another school. They put two children that should have not even been on board buses, on buses. For me as a driver, that is one of the most stressful things when I've For me as a driver, that is one of the most stressful things when I've got to listen on the radio. The sad part, it's not our dispatchers because our dispatchers are out driving. So we've got our billing clerk frantic trying to call. And this is just a school at random I'm going to use, so I'm not naming any particular school. All buses from Bill Seibert, all buses from Bill Seibert. Does anybody know who has Tommy Smith? Right now, the way my heart is racing is the way my heart races because I'm like, Lord, we've lost another child. The sad thing about this, most of our administrators don't even know what buses are at their schools. Parents don't even know what children, what buses their children ride. I've been around transportation all my life because I have a brother that special needs. He's just older than me. This is what kind of got me into transportation. Because the bus drivers that used to come pick up my brother for school got to know me. And because I watched for the care that they took for him, that kind of made me want to do this while I was trying to finish my degree in business administration. And I just kind of fell into love this. Because when it comes down to all these precious children, no matter whose children these are, let somebody mess with my child. Those are my babies. I will become a vicious rabbit pit bull. But then we got schools that don't know what's going on. We got parents that don't know what's going on. Then it makes my job even harder. Then the other question I've got to ask, when are we also going to start holding students accountable? Do we not know that every time a seat gets cut up in that bus, that's a $1,000 seat that gets cut up? Nobody's held accountable. And I'm sorry, and I'm going to finish, I heard the timer. But it's just, maybe I'm just a little bit too compassionate about it.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
But these are just some of the things that I'm just wondering is when? Because we want to do our job. We want to do our job officially. And I'll say this and I will sit down. I implore any of my administrators that are sitting in here.
Mr. Brown? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker and final speaker is Mr. Sammy Carrejo.
I was expecting more people to speak, okay? Good evening, everybody, school board members. I want to thank you guys, first of all. A couple of weeks ago, for those who don't know, we did have the 13th Annual Isleta Alliance Club Uniform Swap. Any of you guys attend? Great, awesome. Anybody over here? Well, actually, more of you should have because I asked for help. Fortunately, we did get several members. So thank you so much to Mr. Barrera, Mr. Mena, Mr. Morales. And now, Dr. Carmen, I know you were probably too busy to go, but we had an amazing feeling for you. Dr. Brown here. Dr. Brown is six foot tall without heels on, right? She wore heels. I told the girl, you got the wrong shoes on. She goes, watch me. I think she did a better job, Dr. Carmen. She was out there. So thank you guys for doing that. But people out here, we don't want to just complain, okay? As parents, our job is not just to come here and say everything they're wrong. We'll come here every once in a while to say that we do things right. But you want to talk about it or you want to do something about it, right? So just to let you know, we did help over 300 families. We did have the media there. We did have $5 haircuts. We did have vaccinations. We did have hearing tests, audio tests. We had everything. So I'm not just a guy who comes here and yells at the school board. I also put them to work, okay? So having said that, all the positive stuff, let's talk about what we're here for today, for the media's here for today. You guys are going to be going into executive session. And most likely, you guys already made up your mind. I highly doubt that whatever I say today is going to change your minds, okay? But let me ask you this. What is the end game? What's your goal? What are we trying to do? Every time I speak to just about anybody, everybody says, we're sick and tired of the corruption that's been going on in SISD for such a long time. I know as a taxpayer, as a parent, I'm tired of it. Are you guys tired of it? As employees, you guys are probably tired of it as well, right? So that's my question. What's the end game? Are we trying to get, let's just say, the big fish? The root of the problem? Or are we just trying to weed out a couple of people? My thing is, I'm a numbers guy. If this has been going on for 10, 15 years, most likely those who have been here 10, 15 years, either one of two knew about it or are part of it. And so me, any employee that's been here longer than 10, 12 years, I would consider them to be an asset to help get to that end game of ending the corruption. You guys make up your own decisions, obviously. Been dealing with you guys for the last few months and have realized I can speak, I can yell. That's why I stopped yelling because you guys don't listen. I'm playing, guys. But at the end of the day, we have to put our kids' safety first. We have to realize if we do eliminate Chief Costa, there's going to be a vacancy, right? How are we going to handle that? Are we going to promote from within? Are we going to hire from outside? Now, is there some problems, just like the lady who spoke about transportation? Is there problems within the department? Of course there is. There's problems everywhere. My suggestion is, one, we stop. We analyze the situation. We identify the problem. We find a solution. And last but not least, we actually implement it. Because many times we find a solution, it's okay, we're going to do this, and yet we don't do it. The gentleman, who doesn't look like he's even 33 years old, said that they haven't done anything, okay? So when you guys go to the executive session, whatever decision you make, we have to understand, this is just step one of ending the corruption. And I applaud you guys for that. But I want to make sure that we take the right step, not just a step. That we're strategic in the way we address this, okay? I keep mentioning Dr. Carmen because when I first met you, I said I can either be your number one ally or I'm going to be a Thor on your side. And like I've told everybody, I don't work for any single one of you guys. I don't have an alliance to any single one of you guys. The only people that I represent here are our children. And I've told, I've spoken to several of you guys. We'll be, we'll agree one day and then maybe a month or two, we're not going to agree. Because at the end of the day, I'm not here to be your friend. I'm not here to have people like me. And I know there's people that don't. I just want to make sure that our children get the best education that they can, that our tax money is spent properly, that nobody benefits from their positions, whether it be on the board or from administrative positions, off of the love of our children. That's what really gets me. So ladies and gentlemen, you guys go to executive session, but you got to remember, what is the end game? We have to be strategic. We've had several superintendents in the past. They're gone. And just like my time, it's gone. Thank you guys so much. Please think about what you guys are going to be doing and make sure to put our kids' safety first before you make your decision. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Item number six, public hearing. A proposed 2022-2023 tax rate. Our presenter is Ms. Vicky Perez, or in this case, Mr. Ressa.
President Mena, Dr. Carmen, members of the board. I am Tony Duss. I'm here on behalf of Ms. Perez, who can't be here today. So we're here to go over and conduct a public hearing on the proposed tax rate for the fiscal year 2223 for the Socorro Independent School District. Please note that this, a notice in the El Paso Times concerning the date and time of this public hearing was published in the El Paso Times. First, for the public benefit presented is the budget that was adopted by the board back in June. And the tax rate that we'll adopt today will certainly impact the revenues for the general fund and the debt service fund. So the three budgets that the board adopted in June were the general fund, the child nutrition program and the debt service budget. Total grand, the grand total of these three budgets were $580.1 million. That's a slight decrease from the revised budget of fiscal year 22. So with respect to the assessed property values, the general fund tax collections were based on the assumption that our adjusted taxable property values would be $13.1 billion. In actuality, the values came in at $13.7 billion, an increase of 14.66% from the prior year. Now, the Texas Education Agency uses the net taxable property value of the district to determine the maximum compressed tax rate of the district, what we call the MCL. The actual certified net taxable values came in at $14.7 billion, an increase of 13.57%. So let us look how these values impacted the proposed maintenance and tax, maintenance and operations tax rate for the district. So with House Bill 3, it requires a compression of the district's maintenance and operations tax rate based on an increase of the district's property values. Here for your review is a comparison of the tax rate from the prior year as well as a tax rate that was presented to the board in June during the adoption of the budget and what we're finally proposing tonight. As you can see, in June, we proposed or we assumed a proposed property value increase of 10.46%. Therefore, reducing the maximum compressed tax rate to 80.46. In actuality, our certified values came in at 13.57%. So in theory, that MCR should have gone down, but it didn't. Now, from the 80.46, we added five cents. We're allowed by House Bill 3 to add five golden pennies. And with that, we'll generate tier-two revenue in the estimate of about $24 million. Now, with respect to the proposed tax rate for tonight, the state requires that all maximum compressed tax rates of school districts be compared to a statewide MCL. And they have to be within 90% of each other. So our MCL was within 90% of the state and therefore, the maximum compressed tax rate is the same as the one we presented in June. So the tax rate that we're presenting today for maintenance and operations is the same that we presented back in June, just for your information. So how does that impact the average resident of Socorro ISD? So as published in the El Paso Times, the tax impact of the average resident in Socorro ISD, because of the increase in the values, the proposed tax rate is a decrease of 2.57 cents from the prior year. But as you can see, because if there's an increase in the average taxable value of the average homeowner, it results in a tax impact of about $41.35. So we're proposing a 2.57 cent decrease overall. But because of the value increases, it shows an impact of $41.35 to the average homeowner. Now, what's also listed in what's called is the voter-approved tax rate. That's the highest rate that the board can approve without having an election. And that's $1,2472, I'm sorry, $97.12. So as mentioned before, the administration published a notice in the El Paso Times and listed the following, that for maintenance and operations, the tax rate would be .8546 per $100 of assessed valuation. That for interest and sinking fund, the tax rate would be $39.5112 per $100 of assessed valuation. So the proposed total tax rate is $1,2497.12. And this is a 2.57 cent decrease from the prior year. So I'm going to repeat that. What we're proposing tonight is an overall, a 2.57 cent decrease from the prior year. Now, the governing board, you will consider approving the proposed tax rates individually as well as the resolution that sets the tax rate later in this board meeting. Now, while school districts are required, are not required to publish it, we have to calculate what's called the no new revenue tax rate for the district. So this is the rate that would produce the same property tax revenue in the coming year as in the prior year if it applied to the same properties. It is not the tax rate that would allow a district to maintain that same total revenue per student as compared to the prior year because it ignores state aid, number one. It's also not the proposed tax rate, which is comprised of the maximum compressed tax rate plus the five golden pennies plus the interest and sinking fund tax rate. So as you can see, what we're proposing is $1,24. That's a little over two and a half cents lower than the current rate. It's a two and a half cent decrease, a little over. But when we calculate the no new revenue rate, it comes out to $1,11. So that no new revenue rate is 12.14% lower than the proposed tax rate. And it's not fair, but that's what the statute requires. And because our proposed tax rate is higher than the no new revenue rate, it triggers certain things. Number one, it requires language in the resolution. And that's bullet number six on your resolution. I think you have a copy of that, okay? And it also requires certain actions by the board when approving the resolution. So to add complications to this is that we have to calculate what's called the no new revenue maintenance and operations tax rate. And as you can see, that rate is 76 cents. And the reason we calculate that is to determine the percentage increase in item number six of the resolution. So let me explain a little bit further. So in item number six, you'll see 11.55% effective increase. That is the difference between the MNO tax rate that we're proposing, 85 cents, and the no new revenue MNO tax rate that we calculated of 76 cents. So that has to be in the language. And that's not fair because, as I mentioned, by adding five cents above 80, we're generating $24 million in additional state revenue. So that is not fair comparison. And as you'll see, we have one of the lowest tax rates in the area. In addition to that, so because, so addition to that, the motion that you make to adopt the resolution requires you to list the total tax rate they're going to adopt plus the effective increase of the total tax rate over the total no new revenue tax rate. I hope that makes sense, which is 12.14%. So the motion that you make is going to have a percentage that's different than the percentage that's listed in item number six. So we want to make sure that you're clear on that. And we want to make sure that the public is clear on that. Because they're going to see a percentage that's listed and they're going to see something on the resolution that's different, okay? So aside from that, it also requires a record vote when we adopt the resolution. So Mr. Mena, you will need to ask every board member by name whether they're going to approve the resolution. And we'll also require a supermajority vote. Five out of the seven of you have to approve the resolution. And if we don't, I believe that the rig reverts to the no new revenue rate. So we have one board member missing, so I believe it would be four out of six. So I'm asking, I'll ask, certainly with legal, if that's correct, so to speak. Just for the public, no, let's just speak.
The law states 60%, so five of a seven-member vote. But now I'm having to do math in front of everybody. And so I'm going to let, I'm going to let you do the 60% calculation.
He's a numbers guy anyways.
66, so it qualifies, okay? And knowing Dr. Carmen being a mathematician, he already knew it on his head, so to speak, right? Okay, so anyway, having said that, presented for you is the historical timeline of the tax rates that have been adopted by the board since 2016. And as you can see, the same, we've had the same overall tax rate from years 2016 to 2018. And there was an increase in 2019, and this was due to the successful bond election. And if the board adopts this tax rate that we're going to propose tonight, then you will see for the last four years, this school district has lowered the tax rate by 13 cents. I would be hard pressed to name any entity in this area who's lowered the tax rate that much. For your information as well for the public, listed is a proposed tax rate of the surrounding school districts in this region. Now, the governing boards may or may not choose to adopt these tax rates. But as you can see, Socorro ISD has the lowest, the lowest MNO tax rate of the region. It also has the third lowest tax rate of the region as well. So having stated that, are there any questions with the presentation that we made to the board? And Mrs., I hope I kind of explained that information.
Very well, thank you, Mr. Ressa.
Mr. Ressa, this is under new business B? Is where I have to ask everybody's individual name and where they stand?
When we adopt the resolution.
Under the resolution?
Yes, sir. So we will go ahead and ask you to adopt the MNO tax rate. That could be just a regular voting method as well as INS rate. It's the resolution that sets the tax rate when you'll, then we'll ask you to do it individually. Now, historically, Mr. Mena, we will always ask the board president before the vote to read out the resolution for the public. So if you can do that, we'd certainly appreciate it. If there's no questions, this is a public hearing, Mr. Mena. So we only need to solicit the public's input.
At this time, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this, on this matter? On this item? Okay, at this time, we'll move on.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Tony. District reports. Item A, facility reports. District reports, item A, facility reports. Mr. Carrasco.
Good evening, President Mena, Dr. Carmen, and members of the board. My name is David Carrasco, Director of Maintenance Operations for Team NSISD. Let me provide you with a report, a facility report that we've had since last month. I believe it starts on page twenty in your booklet. The first item is Socorro High School. First of all, before anything else, I want to thank all the board members who were out there at, I think it was the October fifth or, October, August, August fifth or sixth. I'm already pushing to the, to the intercession time. But August fifth or sixth, and it was on a Saturday, and we, we appreciate everybody who went out there. We had a great tour. The contractor was there. Many of you were there. Many of the staff was out there and we had a great tour walking the building. I think pretty much the pictures don't do any justice. I don't think anybody could, could comment on that. But once you get into the building, be able to walk around, see, see the facility, see it, actually see it as it opens up and you can see things. It's, it's a great facility and, and something that I think our students and, and parents can be very proud of for the Socorro High School flagship campus. I do have a couple of photos there for you. Here's the, the entire campus once everything is, is complete. But if we move on, the first, the first caption we have here, the first slide is the green, of course, is, is phase one. All there, students have been using that facility since last, last year. It's the orange, the orange or peach section you see there, that's, that's phase two. I don't know if this pointer does work here. There it is. But this area here, of course, is all the fine arts, all the fine arts area. And the theater looks beautiful. The dance room or dance floor looks quite impressive. Then you have all the other rooms that there, there have been added. You have the mariachi room, band room, choir room, quite a facility that we were able to, to view and see. And it's something that I think is quite exceptional. It really was, it was quite exceptional to see. Then, of course, you have on the second floor of that area, you're going to have all your, your some, your science, additional science labs of that, that section you see there. And then also the ROTC room, that part of it would be in that area. In the, this area here is the pit. Went by there the other day and the pit is making quite a bit of progress, totally redone, lighting. The flooring is getting, has been taken down to the, to the very wood. They can put a new, new surface, the new logo decals, all that. And so it's going to look quite impressive as well. Then you have all locker rooms and then, of course, the auxiliary, the new auxiliary gym that I think also was, was, was very, very nice addition to, to the campus. So all that is, is focusing right in here. Then, of course, you have that, where you came into the administrative offices. And once you have an administrative offices, you also have the early college. And then above, above the administrative office, what I was kind of taken by was the career technology. And we saw some rooms there. It was like, I think it was, I guess it would be med tech, the ambulance that was there, simulating room or simulating structure or vehicle. And then we had the dental, the dental room. So it's great opportunities, I think, that are going to be offered to our students, but it was, it was excellent. And I don't know how, how you all feel, but it was really appreciated to have you all there and walk in that building. Once I did see that whole corridor open up, one thing for sure, the students will get their steps in, their steps, and the, the faculty and staff will be getting their steps in as well. But Socorro High School, again, we have some additional photos here for you. You can see there, the administrative entrance, has a grand entrance you come in, the attendance office. And these pictures, like I said, I said earlier, they don't do much justice to it because it's, it's taken much more, much more progress has happened there. Here's the dental lab I mentioned earlier. I'm going to try to see if I can set up an appointment here pretty quickly. But they say they're not taking those quite at this time. Then you have the early college wing, that, that's, has taken much more shape there. And then, like I said, here's the, the main gym or the pit, as, as most people refer to it in Socorro. Like I said, it's looking very, very nice. And then the auxiliary gym is, if you're looking at it straight ahead to your left, is the auxiliary gym. So again, quite a few other pictures we have is the athletic locker rooms and then the weight room. So quite a bit of progress. Invite you as, as we move forward. And once we have, I do, I will want to do comment is that we have received the temporary certificate of occupancy. So we'll start moving in furniture into those areas. We're starting to get all the furniture taken care of. I'll be bringing in the custodial team and stuff to make sure everything's processed, all the fixtures are taken care of. The flooring's all nice and, and polished up and ready to receive all the, the furniture. So we'll be working on that as quickly as we, we can, okay? Then, the, like I'd mentioned also earlier, the auditorium was, had a quite a grand entrance. And then you had all the, the addition of that, I guess, the control room, that was quite of a big addition to that area. And then right behind that was, was the dance room, which kind of oversees as well. So we're, we're having that completed and looks very, very nice. Any, any questions on Socorro High School?
Mr. Mena?
Yes, go ahead, Paul.
I know that you guys are having issues with the fire alarm, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so my question is, I, I think it's like the motherboard or it's like some type of chip that, that goes into the system that, that went out because of a lightning strike, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
How quick is that? Because I know that's, that's crucial to opening up the campus, the, the newer section, phase two. How quick are we going to get that? Is BTC expediting that part? So that whenever we are ready, we can just go ahead and move in and the kids can be there. Because I, I do get phone calls from parents wondering when that's going to happen, but they still say, hey, well, our kids are still hot. It's hard, it's hard. I know the maintenance, your, your department is doing really good at trying to keep the older building cool as much as possible. And they understand and, and they're patient, I guess. That's, that's what I want to know for, for the kids so that they can have a comfortable learning environment. You know, is how, how quick can we expedite that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mena, you asked very good questions, very good questions. I will say, we're working, Pyrocom is our, is our vendor that works in coordination with BTC, our staff, maintenance operations staff, our fire, our special systems, and Pyrocom. We're working with them. The key item, like you said, you hit the nail on the head, the, the part they're waiting for, we're trying to expedite that. It's not just something we can just go and say, well, it's this piece here. It's very, very specialized, but we're working with them. Pyrocom hasn't given us a definite timeframe, but on the flip side of that, we're doing everything I can to make the school safe for students during any time there's any kind of student there. And once we do have any kind of confirmed kind of date, I will definitely share that with administration and provide that to you.
They didn't give you like a timeframe more or less? I won't hold you to it, but I, I just want to know for, I just wanted to have an idea, you know, I mean, are they actually, is BTC actually pushing it to, to make sure that, hey, expedite it as soon as possible so that we can have it for our kids?
Yes, sir. I, I, that I can guarantee is more, and it's more really through our vendor, Pyrocom, and, and through BTC as well, working as diligently as we can, knowing the, the, I guess, the, I guess, this is sheer timeframe that we need to have that in place. So there, I guess, what happens is, and I know sometimes that word gets thrown around a lot, but the supply chain as far as able to locate that, that part. But we're, we're having, we're doing that. We can have that taken care of, brought to our campus, installed and taken place in a timely manner. And once we have a secure date for you, I definitely will provide that to you.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're expediting that as quick as we can for our kids, especially the, the students and administration that's there that, you know, they have to deal with it just as much as the kids do, so.
Yes, sir. I, I totally agree with you, yes, sir. Any other questions, Socorro High School? Thank you. Moving on. Is, I'm sorry, SAC two? SAC two, again, is a lot of earth movement. And the word you could use is a lot of underground MEP, mechanical, electrical, plumbing. A lot of the foundational part of the, the structure. If you do go by there, you will see the, I guess, the, the framing or the, the structure going up of the elevator. That is making some progress. So once you have that taking place, but we'll, I just want, we did have these pictures here, just want to show you. But there is, there's a structure we had mentioned earlier. But a lot of it right now is things that's going to be underneath, because again, it is, it is the, it is a football field or it is a field. So most of, of that is going to take place. We've had some, some testing that we're, we're, we send our staff in to make sure those, all those pass and meet all the standards. So that's what's your, your biggest, like you say, processes that are taking place at this time. This picture's a little far away, but you can see some of the parking lot areas who have, that have been taken place or taken care of. So that was a big plus for us moving forward, that we're able to get that taken care of. So that was a, a big plus for us there. Any questions on the SAC two?
So we do have a football field, I mean, the, the parking for the, for this upcoming football season there.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mena.
Beautiful. That's, that's good news.
Yes, exactly correct. Of course, we've been working, working coordinating with all, all the, the stakeholders that were, that are going to be, take part of that. And we're coordinating, coordinating everything and ready for, for August twenty-fifth.
Good job.
Any other questions on SAC two?
How many parking spaces you anticipate for the fall?
Mr. Riley, Mr. Garcia, no. To give you a direct number, because what we did, we have those, those park, those paving areas, right? There's an area. The, the north side area that's, that's, that's like gravel, that's going to give us some additional parking spaces that we weren't sure we were going to have. So our, my maintenance operations team, we've graded, we're going to bring in some, some additional base screening to have those additional parkings that will be, to give you a, a actual number as far as the paving. I wish I had that for you, but I, I don't have it at that time, the actual number.
I know it's significant less and we just have to make plans for it because.
Yes, sir.
Do you have two entry exit points or is it going to just be one?
Yes, sir. We, we do. We'll have, we'll have the, the both interests, the entrance and the exit that were prior. Those will still be available for us. We, we've done a test run. We brought buses, we brought in some of the, the box trucks that we use with warehouse, our warehouse team that, that works with the band and the, with the band and the dance teams. And what we saw, it, it was going to work quite well as far as being able to bring them in, drop them off, and, and sufficient parking for those, for those vehicles. Yes, sir.
Can you get us a number of what you anticipate time for the football season?
Echoing here.
Yeah, I mean, whenever.
Nine hundred to a thousand would be a good number to give you of the ones that are to be paved. Then additional ones, I'm thinking we're working on with my grounds team to hopefully provide some additional north going into that, what's that street? Joe Battle and Bob Hope. Yes, sir.
Okay, if you can just give me a number of, you know, you anticipate complete. You just said two thousand, right?
Right, a thousand, but with additional ones? Yes, sir. With additional that we're going to add with the, with the, it'll be, you could say like a dirt screening. We've already cleaned it. That's going to give us, man, that's going to provide us, will you hold me to that if I give you a number?
No, I just need to.
No, I, I don't say that.
Yeah, the police department's going to have to plan for that.
No, no.
And you're going to have a lot of traffic.
And let me just.
Bumbling into two spots and we just have to make sure we have.
Yes, sir.
Egress, regress for emergency vehicles.
No, and, and just so you, you feel comfortable, we've met weekly and we're going to meet again even this week again. But we've met weekly with, with transportation, police services, athletics, maintenance and operations to coordinate all those details. And of course, after our first game, I'm sure we'll have to come in and maybe do some fine tuning. We feel very comfortable, very comfortable that we're going to be able to provide a, a, a facility that's going to be able to handle entrance, exits, and all the safety part has been, has been discussed with, with our police officers.
And we'll still be having double headers, right?
Yes, sir.
So you're going to have that on top of that.
Yes, we think we have, we, we believe we have a plan as far as exiting ones and then bringing some. That's why I think we feel better with. This area right here that I'm pointing at? That's going to be, you don't have that picture there?
Yeah, we have the picture.
I, I apologize, sir. The, the south, where the tunnel is at? Where the tunnel is at? Where the tunnel is at? That, that's been, that's the parking that's going to be, we believe enough to provide when you have the double headers. Now, to say that it wouldn't be challenging as far as loading, we're going to try to load students in, band members, everything, get them, exit them out. And then the other ones will be coming and, and that parking behind them. But of course, we're going to coordinate with police services to have traffic control and, and, and all that as far as safety first and getting students out and then getting students back in as far as into the new, the new, for, for the next game.
Trying to plan.
No, and we've been planning. And like I said, once that, that first, I'm sure I'll come back and report back to you as far as that goes.
Sounds good.
Mr., yes, go ahead.
Can you get us that number by this Friday on the Friday packet of exact number of paved parking?
Yes, sir.
And then the number of gravel parking that you're, I guess you guys are anticipating and then the combined number of both?
Yes, sir. That, that, the gravel type would probably be a guesstimation because you know how it is, if you've been to like a, a good point I could say is be like at the Pan American Center out there in Los Cruces. Sometimes they have further area and they're not even marked. They just bring them in. They have people just kind of pull them in there. But that'll be, I've got to give you a good estimate. Would that be fair?
That's fair.
I think there, I know there's a cat, there's a way of figure, a configuration of how you can do like feet divided by vehicle and a little space in between. That'd be fair?
Okay.
Be fair?
That's fine.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay. No more questions on SAC two?
JJ, he might have had a comment there.
I'm sorry.
JJ, you sound like you wanted to express something about.
SAC two. Gee, thanks, Coach. I appreciate that. All right, moving right along. Eastlake Combo. Again, want to thank you all. You know, Ben Arbuth went very nicely. Had the ribbon cutting, confetti, everything went really well, I think, for the most part, as far as on the maintenance side. We've, we've gotten everything taken care of. The, the students have been very happy, content. Teachers, I think I've seen, has done really well. So now, on the Eastlake Combo, we're going to try to, I keep saying try. We will coordinate with you a, very soon, a walkthrough, kind of like we did at Socorro High School. That way, again, again, you can visually see things, see how things have, have progressed, have moved forward. Does that sound fair? But some, again, some of these pictures are kind of a little bit outdated and they don't, like I said, the picture doesn't do justice of what you'll see once you're right in that, in that facility. But you can see some here, here, the cafeteria, the gym area, some of the classrooms, all the wings that are there, but that's, that's really progressing very nicely. Any questions on Eastlake Combo? Okay, thank you. All right. I think the final one I'm going to talk about a little bit is a, a high school turf updates. Been extremely happy how that's been progressing. I was not there, had some other things to take care of, but I saw the nice ribbon cutting. Quite impressed with, in my, saw people throwing passes out there and people. In my younger days, I was a receivers coach and I got to give credit to Dr. Carmen. I thought I saw a real nice tight spiral being thrown. I couldn't even throw them with shorts and T-shirt. You were throwing it with a jacket, so kudos. So once we coordinate, that was Eldorado High School. If you were there, it's a, you know, we've been going, I go every day to make sure things are progressing, moving, moving nicely. Eldorado, very beautiful. Next one is America's High School. That will be given to us, probably turned over to us tomorrow. I mean, me and Coach Call the owner are going to go out there, meet with them and look at it, look it over, make sure we're, we're pleased with it. Again, going there, there's so much detail as far as they put each hash mark, each number. I've learned quite a bit of how they do the detail work in there, but that's going to be given to us tomorrow. The next one's Socorro High School. Even from this picture, I think it made a lot of progress even today. It goes in really quickly. You, you kind of see something, you think, man, man, there's, it's going, and then they get it taken care of. What, what does, what does cause some little concerns and issues sometimes is the weather. Like right now, the weather, you know, coming, the rains comes in, they might need to take everybody off. So that, that kind of throws a little bit of wrench into it occasionally. But that should, that's, that's configured for next week to be completed. And then the final one, again, that doesn't do us any justice, that's going to be Montwood High School and that's scheduled to be completed on September first. Okay? And I'll be coordinating, I'll, I'll work with the staff to hopefully do some other ribbon cuttings. And so I know Mr. Morales can throw the ball pretty well. Mr. Betta, we're going to work on your running some routes and we'll see how you, how things go, okay?
Can you go back to America's date just to see the, the completion date? I missed that one.
I'm sorry, which one, sir?
For the Ameri, uh, sorry, Socorro.
Socorro. Probably next week sometime. I'm thinking like next Tuesday, Wednesday?
Because of the rains, okay.
Yes, sir.
Sounds good.
Tuesday, Wednesday. But that's going in nicely as well and they're just beautiful. You know, I, I do want to say when I was going to, I went to Eldorado, it was almost done. And once they, the first day they gave it, they kind of gave it to us to be able to let them to use it. I was there and, and just hearing all the, the football players coming out there and this, the whoo and wow, oh, man, look at this, look at the logo. It was, it was quite incredible. Like I coached for a long time and just want to thank each one of you all for, for providing that for all the, the student athletes. It had band members and saw everybody. It was just a great, great touch for, for the district. So I really want to say thank you to each one of you, okay? I think for the most part, I'm done. Any questions?
Just one more.
Go ahead, Mr. Garcia.
The restrooms for the auxiliary gyms, where are we at on that?
Very good question, Mr. Garcia. Uh, we did receive, I guess, the, the preliminary, uh, submittal. It was provided to, to the administration. Uh, we're reviewing that, working with the architectural firm. And then once from that, we'll, we'll come up with some, uh, working with the construction team and then provide that here soon for, for approvals.
You have a timeline when you expect instruction to start?
No, sir. I, I couldn't give you a thing because it would, of course, would, most would have to be the design and, and how to present that as far as costs and that. That'll have to be, come to you at a different time. But we'll keep you in touch with that.
Do you think that'll be presented by next board meeting?
I'll do everything I can to provide some additional information. Yes, sir. Updated information.
Awesome. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Carrasco.
No, thank you all very much.
Okay, moving on to, um, seven B, HB three, board goals and updates. Mrs. Kelly McBane, welcome.
Hi, good evening, Board President Mena, Dr. Carmen and members of the board. The purpose of this presentation is to provide you an update on the House Bill three board goals adopted in May of 2020, which required yearly interim and long-term goals through 2024. It is also important to note that when we created these goals, it was based off of trend data from 2016, 17, 18 and 19. So pre-pandemic data is what we use to set the goals. Here's just a quick overview of what that plan looks like and what HB three required of the boards. Required the boards to adopt goals in both early childhood literacy and math and college career and military readiness. This is in alignment with the state's sixty by thirty Texas goal of sixty percent of twenty-five to thirty-four year old Texas population to hold a certificate or degree by 2030. The School Finance Commission recommended establishing two key checkpoints along the pre-K-12 grade continuum. Sixty percent of all students meeting the state's MEAT standard at third grade and sixty percent of high school seniors graduating without the need for remediation and achieving an industry-based certification aligned with a living wage or enrolling in post-secondary education or enlisting in the military. The first slide we'll look at is the third grade reading. There are three groups of bar graphs. The first group is Socorro ISD, the second is Region 19, and the third group is the state as a whole. That includes all districts in Texas. And the blue bar represents 2019 data. That's pre-COVID data. So Socorro was at forty-nine percent of third grade students achieving at the MEAT's grade level performance standard on the STAR reading assessment. The orange is 2021. You will not see 2020 data up there because that year the STAR test was canceled. So in 2021, the year in which our students were at home learning remotely. Um, in addition, that STAR test was optional that year. So we had, um, less than a third of our students in third grade actually taking that exam. And out of those that tested, the achievement percentage was twenty-eight percent. So the gray in this past May of 2022, Socorro achieved a twenty-two point gain from the prior year to a fifty percent achievement. Region nineteen as a whole, the data is similar with a nineteen point gain from 2021 and the state didn't drop as much during the 2021 school year, but recovered with an eleven point game. And it is also important to note that not all school districts went to remote learning during that 2021 school year. Um, some stayed in session actually for the full year. Our interim target was met in 2022 at fifty percent and we are on track to meet our 2024 goal. Four of the six student groups met their interim targets as well in Hispanic, white, economically disadvantaged and emergent bilingual. Our African-American and special education populations did not meet the interim targets. So we know that those are groups that we are focusing on for third grade reading. In third grade math, in 2019, we had fifty-five percent of our third graders at MEAT's grade level. And that dropped to seventeen percent during the remote instruction year of 2021 and it rebounded twenty-two points to thirty-nine in 2022. Region nineteen had the same twenty-two point gain and the state had a ten point gain for 2022. So math is a focus for our district as we did not meet our interim goals. Our 2022 goal was fifty-six and we were at thirty-nine. But it is reasonable goal to achieve for next year, given our seventeen point, or I'm sorry, a twenty-two point gain for this past year. Now, the next goal from the School Finance Commission is CCMR data. So students can acquire CCMR, um, points in a couple of different ways. Um, and CCMR stands for College Career Military Readiness. Meeting assessment criteria in math and reading on college readiness assessments, meeting AP IB test criteria, completing dual credit courses, receiving an associate's degree or receiving industry-based certifications. The last two are grade out coherent CTE course sequence and, um, enlistment in the military because the state actually removed those two indicators from the data in 2021. It's also important to note that CCMR data is reported a year behind. So you will see 2019 baseline data first. Though the one that's labeled at sixty percent, that's actually the class of 2018. Okay, 2020 data is the class of 2019 and so on. So as I mentioned, the state removed two indicators from the calculation. So you see a drop in the data from 2020 to 2021. And the data listed there for 2021 and 2022 were the graduating classes during the pandemic. So while our overall goal was not met, we did have two student groups that met the targets, the white and the special education student groups. It's also important to note that the district achieved the state's sixty by thirty goal of the sixty percent meeting college career and military readiness during this time. So the 2024 goal that we set for ourselves is at sixty-seven percent. Um, and that's not a, that's not an unreasonable. We will get there. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions from the board? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, guys, we're now we're going into the consent adjatum, uh, consent agenda. Any items to be pulled?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Beautiful. I have a motion from Ms. Najira, a second by Mr. Guerra. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, new business. Consider approval of an order authorizing the defiance of defeasance of, of certain currently outstanding obligations of the district, Mr. Ressa.
Yes, President Mena.
Did I say that right?
Yes, you did.
I did say it right?
Defeasance of, of bonds.
How do you say?
Defeasance.
Defeasance?
Yes, sir. Of bonds existing.
We had a little debate about that.
You did great. So, so President Mena, Dr. Carmen, members of the board, the administration is here to present to you an opportunity for us to defees, pay off some debt early. Certainly provide some, uh, some, some, put the district in a strong position with respect to our, to our debt. And here to present that information is our bond counsel, Mr. Paul Braden for Norton Fulbright Rose. Mr. Braden?
Thanks, Cody. Tony, uh, good evening. As Tony mentioned, my name is Paul Braden. I'm a partner with Norton Rose Fulbright, Bond Counsel to the District. So, uh, this item, which I think begins on page two-hundred-and-two of your board book, and what simply what it's about is paying off debt early, paying off debt of the district early without raising your INS tax rate. So a defeasance is a legal word by which you set money aside in an escrow, which will allow you to pay off debt. And therefore it's legally defeased, which means it's no longer outstanding for all legal purposes. So it's counted as paid off. And the way, and I'll go through the mechanics of how this is and then I'll touch briefly on some of the financing or at least a summary of, of the specifics of the proposed defeasance that were prepared by your staff and, uh, your financial advisor. So the two items that are before you from the legal mechanics, one is a resolution that can be found on page two oh two. And then attached to that resolution, uh, which should be found on page two eight is an escrow agreement. And so what the resolution does is it identifies certain bonds that are outstanding, portions of certain outstanding bonds of the district. In this case, the Series 2015 B bonds. And identifies a portion of those bonds that you can pay off early by taking money aside and putting it into an escrow. The escrow is, is held by a third-party bank and the money that's put in there is sufficient to pay off the bonds when they can be called, when they can be legally redeemed and the principal and interest payments until that date. The way your bonds are issued is you issue them, but when you sell them to your investors, they can't be, you know, you can't turn around and, and pay them off immediately. The investors, as part of the contract, negotiated certain terms that they have to be outstanding for. So they really want to hold that interest rate for a certain period of time. So when you defees the bonds, it's a recognition that they can't be called until later in time, but you're putting all the, the money aside to pay off that debt in, uh, during that period of time. So I'll direct your attention to, I think it's page two-twenty-five of your board book where there's a summary that was prepared by your, uh, your financial advisor. And it talks about defusing six point eight million dollars from the Series 2015 B bond issue. And what it identifies is the principal amounts for the maturity is 2024 through 2028. That total six point eight million dollars. So that's the amount that would be paid out over time, uh, will actually be paid off. Um, then it has the interest that's due on those bonds up until the day you can call them. And then it has the total amount that would be, you would typically have to pay to pay off those bonds, the seven point eight million dollars. And what this, what the documents are doing is you're putting aside seven point one million dollars. And with that, with the investment on that escrow, it'll pay off the seven point eight. And so there's a seven savings right there of seven hundred and five thousand dollars. But more importantly, you're taking away some debt. You're, you're removing six point eight million dollars debt from your portfolio. Um, and then the summary down here is a description of the 2015 B bonds, the six point eight million dollars, the maturity is twenty-four to, through twenty-eight. The interest rates that they bear is three and a half to five percent. And then the call date is two fifteen, 2015. So as I said earlier, the contract with the, with the bondholders, when you originally sold those bonds, said that you could not pay off those bonds until February fifteenth of 2025. So what you're doing is you're setting money aside now to pay off those bonds. Uh, that's, in summary, what this is. And I'll pause now for questions.
So how much money are we putting aside? Six point eight million?
Six point eight is the amount of, of principal that's being paid off. But at the, when you put the escrow, the amount in the escrow, it's seven point one. And that escrow won't be, it'll be established sometime after you take action today. But it might be closer till February of next year because that's when your, your taxes are collected. So you're taking all the legal action to date to put it in place, but you actually won't fund it until the money, your taxes come in in February of next year. And so there's an assumed, uh, this footnote here says based on the state and local government security slug rates. So there's assumed interest, you know, rate of return on those slugs on the state, uh, on federal securities that you'll buy in that escrow. But the, right now, the calculation is seven point one would be sufficient to pay off the seven point eight.
Any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Morales, go ahead.
Yeah, how often can you do this to where you can save our taxpayers' money as far as, as?
Well, it's, it's a little bit of a unique situation because you're able to do it without raising your tax rate, your INS tax rate. So when those circumstances come up, you know, if those circumstances come up, many districts do this once a year so that they can keep their tax rate stable but pay off district earlier. But it's not always the case because your, your outstanding bonds from year to year, the difference, it differs. So there might be years where you have more bonds scheduled to be paid, just regularly scheduled to be paid. So you have to keep your tax rate level, you have to pay off those bonds. But if you have times where your, your regular scheduled payments are lower than usual, you could do these type of, this type of mechanism.
Would there be a difference over time as far as interest rates as they, as they start increasing? Is that going to help us in the future?
There will be a difference. So as interest rates increase, it'll help on the escrow. So your investments will increase on the escrow that you're going to set aside. But of course, as you issue more bonds, the interest rates on those bonds will go higher. Thank you.
Mr. Braden, so we, so we're going to have a savings of six point five million, but this also gives us better bond rating, correct? So we decided to go out for a bond. This would help us, but we only have one year. Is that correct?
This, this is only for this one year. So, uh, you know, in, in following years, there might be opportunities to do this again, but this one is only for this one year. It does have a positive impact in terms of, to the extent the rating agencies look at your debt. And even though you're a growing district and you're a strong district, they might say, well, you have a lot of debt outstanding. Well, if you're able to pay off debt early with these two, with, through these type of mechanisms, that's a positive thing.
So please note that we're a growing school district. So traditionally, growing school districts have a little higher, uh, debt than a regular, more mature school district. This gives us a strong position to be able to pay off some debt and be in a strong financial position on the debt side going forward. So we hope that you would approve it.
Can I get a motion?
Have to make a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Guerra and a second by Ms. Morales. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Nine C, consider approval of the 2022, 2023 interest. Wait a minute, I missed one, sorry. I missed B. Nine B, consider approval of the 2022, 2023 maintenance and operation tax rate.
Yes, uh, thank you, Dr. Brown, for allowing me to borrow your board book.
Sorry.
So, uh, re, uh, administration recommends, uh, President Mena, Dr. Carmen, the members of the board, uh, maintenance and operations tax rate of zero point eight five four six to be assessed per one hundred dollars of valuation. Recommend.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Morales, a second by Mr. Barrera. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can move on to item C. Consider approval of the 2022, 2023 interest and sinking fund tax rate.
President Mena, Dr. Carmen, members of the board, administration recommends, uh, an interest and sinking fund tax rate of point three nine five one one two per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation.
Motion to approve?
Second.
So I have a motion by Ms. Najira and a second by Mr. Barrera. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item D, consider approval of the resolution which officially levies the tax rate for the 2022, 2023 school year. And I will read the resolution. Thank you. Socorro Independent School District Resolution adopting, adopting the tax rate for the 2022, 2023. Item number one, the district, the school district has adopted a fiscal year commencing July first and ending June thirtieth. The dis, the school district has received and certified taxable property values within the school district from the El Paso County Central Appraisal District. The Board of Trustees has published the notice of public meeting to discuss the proposed budget and tax rate as required by section four four zero zero four Tax Education Code. The Board of Trustees has conducted a public hearing on the proposed tax rate on August sixteenth of 2022. Therefore, now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Socorro Independent School District as follows. Number two, maintenance and operation tax rates per one hundred dollars of, per one hundred dollars of valuation of property in the school district for the school year of 2022, 2023 shall be zero point eight five four six zero zero. Item number three, the interest and sinking tax rate per one hundred dollars of valuation of property in this, in the school district for this fiscal, for the school year 2022, 2023 shall be zero point three nine five one one two. Item number four, the total tax rate for the 2022, 2023 school year shall be one dollar point twenty-four nine seven one two. Item number five, this tax rate shall be raised, shall, this tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate. Item number six, the tax rate will effectively be raised by eleven, eleven point five five percent and will, and will raise taxes for the maintenance and operations on a one hundred dollar home, a one hundred thousand dollar home by approximately a hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty cents. Approved on this date, August sixteenth of 2022.
Thank you, President Mena. That was a handful. I appreciate. I appreciate that.
Okay, so at this time, I will call each individual board member by name, and I, okay, sorry, let me get a motion first, sorry, thank you.
Mr. Barrera, I just have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr., as I said, you mentioned that we're going to save 2.57 cents.
It's, the, the tax, the total tax rate is lower than last year by 2.57 cents.
Which is a great thing, I know several years ago, we were penalized from the state because our tax was so low.
That's correct.
And they penalized us. Is that going to happen in a couple of years, maybe?
Well, it all depends on the legislature when they meet next legislative session in January. Mr. Guerra, I would hope that that wouldn't be the case, but it's all, at this point, conjecture on my part. I do think that the legislature should understand that this district has been judicious with respect to their tax rate, and hopefully will certainly reward the district like Socorro ISD in the future.
Motion to approve?
Second.
You have to read it. You have to read it.
So, so the motion, you have a page in front of you, Mr. Barrera, I mean, Mr. Guerra, it's listed there, can you read the motion that's in bold? It's listed in the cover page.
I'm all there, Mr. Castellano, go ahead and read it, please.
Okay. That's number five, this tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and? No, sir. There's a cover sheet and it's in bold.
I moved that the property tax rate, that one?
Oh, I moved that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 1.249712, which is effectively a 12.14% increase in the tax rate. Thank you.
So I have a motion by Mr., who motioned it? Mr. Castellano and a second by Mr. Barrera, all those in favor?
No. No, sir.
Okay. Correction, now I will call upon you for your vote. Mr. Castellano?
Aye.
Mr. Guerra?
Aye.
Ms. Morales?
Yes.
Myself is aye. Mr. Barrera?
Aye.
Ms. Najera?
Aye.
It's a unanimous vote.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Motion passes. Okay, moving on to item E. Consider approval of the 2022-2023 district and campus improvement plans and performance objectives. Mr. Starkey, Dr. Starkey?
I'll start in just a second, clicker is not here. Good evening, President Mena, members of the board and Dr. Carmen. It's my honor and privilege to come before you all tonight, just as each year, this is a yearly, yearly exercise that we bring before you for your approval to improve, to approve our district and campus improvement plan, performance objectives. This is for the 2022-23 school year, of course, and I just wanted to say that we got those to you all either through an internet link or also on flash drives. We obviously didn't make that part of the board book because we didn't want that to be 269 pages long, okay? So if you all got a chance to look at any of those, if perhaps not, got some samples for you. Okay? So with that, each year, it is in the Texas Education Code that annual plans, improvement plans must be annually developed and reviewed, and the board must approve, the school board must approve campus performance objectives and district performance objectives each year. We also, upon approval of the plans, we go ahead and post them up the very next day on the website as, as we are legally mandated to do, and then through formative evaluations, they are put back up quarterly and updated all the way through the summative process. So we come, by this, by this law in the TEC, we come before you to ask for your approval. Okay, just very quickly, we have the, this is the timeline that we always use, and we try to have a continuous improvement plan for our DIP, our SIP, and our HB3 board goals, which you heard Ms. McBain discussing earlier, those are also part of the plan. We have, we start off with our needs assessment, we start off with our development, with our approvals, and then we move on with our evaluation, and the idea is to come back full circle and to start again, so we have a continuous planning and improvement process for, for our district and for all campuses within. Okay? We do have our five currently boarded, current adopted district goals. We know that Dr. Carmen is going to engage in some strategic planning to perhaps have those modified, and of course, that would be by your approval. When that happens, we will adjust those accordingly based on what you may approve or what is satisfactory, but these are the goals that you would find in the plan because they're currently approved now. Okay? So a couple of examples, okay, we have Compastery Elementary School, they got an A, by the way, I didn't know that when I published this. Okay, we, we had, these are some examples of some objectives where we look at their reading, math, and science, what the stakeholders there were looking at in their CIP to try to make improvements on their approaches, Meats and Masters objectives there, so that's example of that. Another thing, Ms. McBain went over these, examples of these, and each campus has to develop those HB3 goals because as we know, everything that we get in a district, like for example, we got 88, right? Okay, so that's everybody coming through, so everyone has their own objectives and HB3 goals that they have to do to go ahead and have the cumulative take place. So that's an example of something you'll find in this particular plan, those, those objectives there, and then we've got a couple more there that deal with the, what's the word I'm looking for, the formatives that are leading up to the grade three results. Then I have just an example of the high school, I used Americas this time, and we have the CCR there, it's not the Fortunate Son, but rather college and career readiness, okay? We have, so Americas, they had, I think the district had 61, Americas, just as that example, had 63 that met CCR criteria, so they're trying to get up to 70. Their industry-based certifications shows that they're trying to make an increase, and they're, on their math TSAI, TSIA test, the formative, they're trying to make some increase there as well. Okay, so those are just some examples. I would, I would always say that also with 269 pages of, of objectives, none of them will look exactly the same, some, some of them are formatted the same, they're never going to look exactly the same because every campus is going to have something that's different, but in the end, what everyone is doing is reaching toward the common goal for the common good. And that's all I have, with all, with all, respectfully ask for approval.
Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Morales, a second by Ms. Najera, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number F, discussion possible action to approve the TPA of group medical health benefits, medical provider network, pharmacy benefits management, stop-loss reinsurance, health savings account administration, COBRA administration, RFP number E2307. Mr. Carmen, Maria Carmona?
Good evening, Board President Mena, Superintendent Dr. Carmen, members of the board, Maria Carmona, HR Director, this evening, the district's insurance consultant, Mr. Randy McGraw from Hub International, will be presenting information regarding the best and final offers received for the third-party administration of group medical health benefits, medical provider network, pharmacy benefit management, stop-loss reinsurance, health savings account administration, and COBRA administration.
If I'm not mistaken, your information included a copy of the presentation that will be reviewed next?
Good evening, President Mena, members of the board, Dr. Carmen, I'm Randy McGraw with Hub International, and we're pleased to have been retained to work with the district to help you manage your employee benefit programs, and tonight, I'm going to just go through a brief presentation that we used with your review committee, and these, this presentation reflects the results of the best and final offer exercise that we went through. The committee considered a whole lot more information than what's contained in these slides here, and I'd like to also commend your committee, I thought they did a fantastic job at every step along the way. We had four different carriers, you'll see their names in a moment, that came and gave us presentations, and the committee was present, and they asked some great questions there, and we had some good follow-up discussion afterwards. So the long title of the RFP identifies a lot of different services that work together to make the operation of your health plan seamless, and so the RFP was designed to encourage proposers to bid on any one item if they wanted to, or they could bid on all of the items, and so it could be a mix or a match in terms of the different services that you have. And so we invited all four carriers that responded on the, to the request for third-party administration, that would be, you know, what people recognize as their insurance carrier. Your current TPA is Cigna, and they've been your service provider for about 16 years now. So when we did the, after we solicited, after we received the initial information, we had a review session with your committee, and then we had the finalist presentations, and then we invited the finalists to improve their offers, and this is the result of the improved offers. So you can see the four, the names of the four carriers alphabetically, Aetna, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Cigna, and United Healthcare, UHC stands for United Healthcare, came back and made some changes to their proposal offers. The PBM stands for Pharmacy Benefit Manager, and the Pharmacy Benefit Manager administers your prescription drug card, and you currently use a company called Express Scripts, and you've been using them for 16 years also, I believe. So as we went through the analysis, there was a question of should we continue to carve out the PBM and contract with a PBM separate from the carrier, or should we consider bundling together their pharmacy services along with their processing and management of the medical claims? And it was the consensus of the committee after we sat through all the information and reviewed it, that having a combined bundled approach would be in the better interest of the district. That allows for the third-party administrator to incorporate claims data on their, on your pharmacy and prescription drug utilization into their clinical programs to help manage and identify areas that need attention as you move forward in time. And so we did decide early on that, or after the finalist presentations, that the bundled approach would be the best approach for the district. And then we also received, or we invited any of the proposers that made offers to administer your flexible spending account, or your health savings account, which work hand-in-hand with employees' elections in terms of how much money they may want to set aside on a pre-tax basis to help cover their out-of-pocket expense, and as well as COBRA administration, which administers the continuation of benefits for employees that are eligible for extended benefits once they terminate employment or have a qualifying event under the health So this slide here, I would describe as a comparative analysis of the results from the best and final offer, and again, we have them listed alphabetically going across the top. In the top portion, there's a section called fixed expenses, and these are the fees that we pay to the third-party administrator and for reinsurance to protect the district from an unpredictable catastrophic loss. And so these are actual fees that are charged on a per-employee, per-month basis, and you can see how they are tallied up across the board there, so that's referred to as the fixed cost because you're going to pay these expenses before you have to pay any of your claims expense, being a self-funded plan sponsor. In the variable cost expense portion, this gives you a comparison of what would be considered allowed medical claims and allowed pharmacy claims, and then you notice on the pharmacy claims, it says "net of any rebates." So allowed simply means that after you, and we've all experienced it, if you go to the hospital, you get a bill, it might be for $50,000 or so, but your third-party administrator has a negotiated preferred provider rate that takes a discount off of that charge, and when, and that determines what's the allowed charge, and then once you've got the allowed charge, then the third-party administrator subtracts out your share of the expense such as your deductible, your office visit co-pays, or what's referred to as coinsurance as well. So this comparison only compares the allowed charges for both of those, and on the pharmacy category, the district receives rebates from, through the pharmacy benefit manager, and these are rebates that are paid by manufacturers to the PBM, and they in turn pass the rebates back to the, to the district. So some of the carriers have the abilities or could offer to say, we'll just take your rebates and make your administrative fee zero, that first medical plan fees line across the top. But in this illustration comparison, since not everybody offered the same arrangement on how you use your rebate, the value of the rebates is included in that allowable pharmacy claims expense. And so there you can see the total variable expense, those are your claims expenses as they fell into line, and these are all calculated based on the same number of what would be considered billed charges, and then we took the data provided by the carriers that said, this is what our ability to negotiate price would look like. So the same input goes in, all of their variables get applied to that to come up with these answers down below. And so in the green bar, you notice in the first one, it says comparable gross paid claims cost with no allowances. So another feat, another phenomena that happens in these types of services is the third-party administrators or the pharmacy benefit managers provide you with incentives to select their offer or an allowance. And so you can see in the first-year allowance, or in the first year, they usually say, here's an allowance you can use for wellness, or if we have to order reports, if we're changing carriers, we can pay the fees, it helps cover the cost of a transition from one carrier to another. And this was very impressive in that several of your bidders made very significant improvements to their offer in the best and final offer. So for example, in Aetna's case, they offered up to $860,000 in different allowances that you can use to offset your expenses. Blue Cross Blue Shield, their allowance came out to about $2.3 million, and Cigna had total allowances of 1.8 million, and United Healthcare of $500,000. So then you can see on that next green row across the bottom, this is what the comparable cost of, between the different offers would be if you take into consideration their first-year allowances. And then after the first year, things change a little bit, so some of them continue to offer incentives or allowances that you can use in future years, and those numbers are represented across the bottom of the grid. And so I do believe in your package that you have a lot more information based on the ranking, et cetera. And the cost component of the entire analysis from the district was equal to 35 points in total cost that a bidder could score for having the lowest overall cost. And the way this works out, too, is that the only, the deviation in terms of the 35 points, obviously the lowest one had 35 points, and then the highest one came in at 31 and a fraction, so there was only four points in deviation due to cost, and your committee and your evaluation team put a whole lot more emphasis, 65 points worth, on the company's capabilities, their track records, their references, all the other things that go into the total evaluation. So the difference in the total score was not strictly a determinant of cost, it was also a reflection of the committee's review in terms of who they perceive to be the best overall value and the best fit for the district moving forward. Do you have any questions on this part?
Questions? Which one's the best fit? You said the best fit.
Well, from the cost perspective, Aetna, and I believe that's your recommendation overall, too, in the, in the backup.
Aetna.
It's got this.
It's got this. The next portion, because this presentation is strictly the financial side of the equation. So this slide here on page eight represents the fees that would be charged to administer the health savings account, or the flexible spending accounts that support your employees in their elections as they go through open enrollment. And on the bottom line there, this one is not near as complicated as measuring the third-party administration and claims expense, et cetera. So you can see the estimated cost for each of these services across the bottom on this category. And in the final recommendation that's been presented to you, the recommendation is to follow the lead for the TPA recommendation. So, off of this chart, Aetna is the recommendation as well going forward. The last category was on the COBRA administration. And similar thing here, this would just be the notification of a person's rights to continued coverage if they're qualified to be offered COBRA. And then the collection of their monies and, or their premium payments, and then tracking whether, how long they can stay on COBRA, depending on what their qualifying event was and what other things that happened along the way. And again, on the bottom portion, you can see the total fees estimating. Blue Cross Blue Shield overall had the lowest overall cost on COBRA administration. But their, their offer for COBRA administration is only valid if you select them for the third-party administration. And so in this one, because COBRA is not a huge cost component of the overall program, the company in the far-right column, WEX, is the recommended vendor for your COBRA administration. So some of the things that you don't see here are what are the benefits going to look like? What are the payroll deductions going to look like? And the answer to that question will come after we have some additional meetings with administration on plan design changes and changes in payroll deduction. Because we can't pick, or we can't decide what the plan design is going to be and how that's going to work until we know who's going to be the third-party administrator. So I think we have, well, I know we have a meeting scheduled in a few weeks to visit the portion about what the benefits would look like and what the payroll deductions would look like going forward. And so that's not part of this record, part of this recommendation for a ward. First, we need to know who we're going to do business with, and then we'll visit with you on the details of what the benefits would look like. And we've had some preliminary meetings, we just need to get everybody together after this meeting to, to handle that part. And that's the short presentation from the best and final process with your evaluation committee. Happy to answer any questions, not just on this, but whatever else you might have.
Go ahead, Mr. Madero.
So, I remember this was brought up in the finance committee last year. I remember when I chaired it, that was my biggest thing. I was advocating and saying, "We're not going to drive the cost up to the employees." And especially now where we have the inflation, that's something that we really got to consider now. And I'm still going to advocate for that. My question is, with the recommendation that you've given, is it going to, is the cost going to go up significantly for the employee?
It's going to be subject to the discussion with the committee, or the administration on what it is. But in the preliminary numbers that we've looked at, there will be one cost option for the majority of your employees if they consider it. It would be basically equal to having free or one-hundred percent benefit coverage. So, you've got three different benefit plans. You have a premier plan, your base plan, and your consumer-driven health plan. And so the, and then we had also talked about in the finance committee too, how your current payroll deductions aren't necessarily relative or in line with the costs associated with each person. But there are going to be options there where there's cost reductions for employees in terms of the ones that they look at. There are going to be a couple of categories where the cost is going to go up. And so primarily, those are going to be in the premier and the base plan, where there might be a tier where it goes up. But there's going to be several where there'll be no change or a reduction also for employees. And we're sensitive to the, the fact that we want to make sure there's affordable options available for employees.
Now, with those other two plans that you said that are projected to go up, I mean, what are we looking, is it going up one percent? Is it going up five percent? What's, what's the cost that we're looking at percentage?
They're not necessarily a percent across the board.
Dollar mountain.
In some cases, there's a flat adjustment being made. I don't have.
And I know you can't give me an exact number, but I mean, just ballpark. I mean, I, I want to know, and I'm pretty sure the employees are curious.
For single employees, especially, you'll see very little movement in cost. But in the categories where there's a spouse, such as employee and spouse, or employee and family in the base and the premier plan, you'll see those rates increase by, let's say, maybe a hundred and fifty dollars per month in those.
A hundred and fifty per month.
If that's what the board, or what the administration recommends in the future.
Yeah, well, I'm going to recommend, I guess, maybe we consider going back to the drawing board, I mean.
Okay.
It sounds like you're going to raise the cost to drive them to a certain plan.
Pardon me?
You're going to try, you're going to raise the cost for the premium and the other plans to drive the employees to a certain discount plan rate where they're actually paying more out-of-pocket.
There are quite a few different options that are going to be made available, some of which will offer benefits at a hundred percent coverage, no deductible, no co-insurance, et cetera. So while the, while the payroll deductions may go up, your choice of benefits will improve in terms of which plan you want to get. The consumer-driven health plan, and we talked about this in the finance committee last year too, the, the recommendation from us, we feel strongly about, is to, with the savings that the district will recognize from this process, take some of those savings and make a contribution to a health savings account for employees. And then they can use that money to help pay for their deductibles and co-insurance. So, there's like three different moving parts into the, how much, what am I going to get and how much are things going to cost?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Geta.
Actually, I know Cigna was with us for sixteen years, and your standards of savings with Aetna. But the other thing I want to make up as a concern is the coverage, the benefits. Make sure employees are getting the same coverage, or just better coverage from Aetna than Cigna.
So the, the benefit plan design is the decision of the district. And so there are some recommendations to tweak a few things. For example, in order to drive more traffic to your pharmacy and your onsite clinic, where they dispense generic drugs only. Generic drugs in your current plan designer free, no matter where you go to get them. So one of the changes will be to add a co-pay to generic drugs. If you go to a retail drugstore like Walgreens, or CVS, or Albertsons, or whatever. But if they go to the clinic, they'll still get generic drugs at a zero-dollar co-pay. Because the, we're not, we're not getting a lot of generic, we're not getting a lot of drugs dispensed to the clinic. But because people can get free generics at any drugstore they want to go to. The other thing too, one of the changes, is to increase the co-pay on the base plan and the premier plan for specialty care and for urgent care especially, because those are set at the same level. For example, a thirty-five dollar co-pay gets you in to see a specialist, also gets you in to see a urgent care provider. And your clinic can provide all the same services of an urgent care provider at no cost to the employee. But when that co-pay is set low, what we, what you really want to do is you want to drive your utilization to your clinic where it's no cost to employees. Second level would be drive them to their primary care physician, or their specialty care physician, where they have a co-pay. The next level of care, which is more expensive, would be going to urgent care. So right now, you, from an employee perspective, they pay the same co-pay if they go to urgent care or to the doctor. But going to the urgent care costs your plan more money. And if we change the co-pay on the urgent care and raise it, then that will also drive more people into your clinic, which will help you get a higher return on investment inside your clinic, whether it's through the pharmacy or through the medical, medical side of the clinic. So those are just two of the key changes there to be made on the high deductible health plan. A change in the deductible, and that's really just due to the IRS sets the minimum threshold for deductibles each year. And so it's, it's time to change that one and increase that deductible by two hundred dollars. But the consideration for contributions to the health savings plan will more than offset the two hundred dollars. We've got several values that we're kicking around, but would not want to discuss those in detail until your working committee group works, or meets. And the people on that committee are, I believe, Dr. Carmen, Dr. Gonzalez, Ms. Perez, and a few other HR administrators as well.
You, you talk about the clinic, and it has set hours where people can't even go because they shut by six. You don't have the infrastructure in place, so you're going to have to look at that cost coming in if you're going to make it accessible to more employees, including people that don't live around Mountwood High School. You know, you have the Far East, you have the Lower Valley. You guys are going to have to go back to your committee and sharpen your pencils because I won't accept, you know, just, "We're going to increase it on the employee because we want to drive them over here." No, it's not going to be acceptable. We didn't give them a pay raise and help them live comfortable only to take it away on the other end. Okay, so it's going to be a hard sell for me, okay? You understand?
That's fine, I totally understand return on investment.
Okay.
I agree with Mr. Castaneda, that was one of the questions I was going to ask. I mean, if they're closing, and don't get me wrong, the health clinic is great and stuff for, for our employees, and they do a phenomenal job. But I mean, that's a cost that we're going to have to incur as well if we're going to consider doing that. We're going to have to extend those hours, so is that something that we're going to consider?
But guys, let me remind you that the health clinic is not the agenda. That's, that's another matter that we can, we can talk about later on, about the health clinic, and maybe we can talk about, but right now, we need to concentrate, guys, on, on this item right here, okay?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if there's any specific questions to the item listed on the agenda.
I couldn't hear you. Can you, can you remove your mask?
Yes. Were there any other additional questions relating the item listed on the agenda?
Any other?
Concerns?
Okay.
Administration recommends approval of the best and final recommendation is presented by the District's Insurance Consultant Hub International for Third-Party Administration, A Group Medical Health Plan Benefits, Medical Provider Network, Pharmacy Benefit Management, Stop-Loss Reinsurance, Health Savings Account Administration, and COBRA Administration.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Carmona, if I'm understanding this correctly, whether we increase deductibles, or increase the premiums, or urgent care co-pays, that'll be decided later.
At a later time, yes, ma'am. This, this particular item is only for administrative services only, based on what the school district decide, decides to provide as benefits to the employees. We're self-funded, so we have that ability. Yes, ma'am.
So just to make it clear, we're not deciding any type of rates right now?
No, sir.
Okay.
So we can make a decision right now, we can say yes, but then you guys come back a month from now, or two months from now, make the recommendation final with numbers and everything. And at that point, if we're still not satisfied or satisfied, that's when we either go back to the drawing board or we accept it the way it is, correct?
No, this, this particular item is just for the company who will be administering our medical expenses, the entire group. Later, at a later time, as mentioned by Mrs. Najera, we will come back and do a presentation for the committee administration, letting you know about what plans we offer right now and what are the possibilities that we can, how we can improve, how we can lower, what areas of, we can work with. Because, again, our health fund right now has been running at a deficit. So we need to bring that information to you, make you aware of how much at a, at a deficit, and, you know, what, what areas can we modify to be able to amede that expense?
Essentially, what you're asking is for us to approve Aetna right now?
For the administrative services, yes.
With that said, motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Morales and a second by Mrs. Najera. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr..
Thank you.
Nine G. Consider approval of, of updates on the compensation plan. Ms. Stiles.
Good evening, President Menah, Dr. Carmen, members of the board. My name is Selena Stiles, and I'm a Director of Human Resources for Support Personnel. And this evening, I'm here to present proposed changes to the compensation plan. If you refer to your board book on pages three oh one to three oh three, those are where you can find the proposed changes. Pages three oh one to three oh two are referencing changes to the current athletic stipends with the budget impact included on page three oh two. And on page three oh three, it includes two travel stipends for our early college advisors that will be paid out of Title IV, and a fine arts communication specialist cellphone stipend that will be paid out of ESAR. And those budget impacts are included there as well. I've also included a copy of the current compensation plan and a draft with the proposed changes. Administration recommends approval of the updates to the compensation plan. And if there are any questions, I can entertain them.
Question?
Go ahead.
As we discussed in committee, these athletic stipends, you're increasing it by three hundred thousand dollars for the coaches, right? And you said it was to retention or to keep them, help them incentive to stay?
To be competitive with our market, yes, sir.
And I questioned it, why was it brought in after the, the school years and the contracts were already signed?
So that was based on the timing of when the request was made to us to look into it?
Are you looking into the fine arts stipends or anybody else, you know, to be competitive?
Yes, sir, I know you requested that in our committee, and I'll be providing that information at one of our next committees.
Okay. Real quick too, also on the travel stipend, you're, you updated it's going to cost another two thousand dollars. Have you looked at a more cost-effective way to run the travel stipend? It slowly increases, and now we're at what, at one million, three thousand? Does that include this one?
No, sir. These two aren't, those two stipends are not included.
Million, five thousand. Have you looked at another cost-effective means to actually implement a travel stipend instead of paying it out? Can we start looking at motor pool or something elsewhere? Because year after year, you're paying out a million, a million, a million, a million. We're getting to the point where, yes, it started when the district was smaller, but now we're getting to the point where we have to look somewhere else to say, "Okay, how can we be more effective?"
Okay. And yes, sir, we can, we will definitely discuss that with Dr. Carmen to see if that's something that we'll propose in the future.
Any more questions? I'd like a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Morales and a second by Mr. Barrera. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stiles. Going on to item eight, consider approval of revisions to TASB Updates 119 and Local Policy. Ms. Cruz.
Good evening, Board President Menah, members of the board, and Dr. Carmen. We're recommending the consideration approval of the revisions to the following policies as were presented to our committee meeting and now to our board. We have three revisions, one to CPC Local involving Office Records Management, EHB Curriculum Design Special Programs, and EIF Academic Achievement Graduation. I also would like to correct that DEC is not included in this packet as one of our local policies that we have reviewed and are asking to revise or to, for approval as presented. CPC Local, the revision, is that we have included the word designate. So we're allowing that Chief Human Resource Officer or designate shall serve as, serve as and perform the duties of the District's Records Management Officer. It's a minor change. To EHB, we have added clarification so that it reads in accordance with the Texas Education Agency Administrative Procedures. So again, we've just added verbiage so that it's clear to our community. And to EIF, we have added the information so that it's easy for our community to find information about financial aid and application confirmation opt-out form. So three revisions. All the other policies, we are asking that we accept them as recommended by TASB.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So a motion by Mr. Barrera, a second by Mr. Morales. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aye. Consider impossible adaptation of redistricting criteria. Dr. Cruz, go ahead.
Good evening again, Board President Mena, members of the board, and Dr. Carmen. As you know, redistricting has been a topic of conversation. We've had Thomason Horton L., LP, present to you a couple of times, the last meeting being June 7th, 2022, where they presented to you. A redistricting is a process by which the boundaries of elective districts are periodically redrawn in response to changes in the population. And so we have tonight Ashley L. White from Thomason Horton to present information about the redistricting guidelines and to recommend a resolution which is included in your packet. She will be joining us remotely.
You all virtually this time around. Again, my name's Ashley White. I'm a senior associate in the Dallas office for Thomason Horton, and I just wanted to kind of remind everyone of who's on our redistricting team. We have myself, and then we also have Lisa McBride, who is a partner in the Houston office, and then we have our two demographers, Rocky Gardner and Matthew Cluck from Zonda Education. And Rocky presented with me at the last board meeting so that we could talk about the actual change analysis. And so just a reminder of what redistricting is. Redistricting is the process by which the boundaries of elective districts, so that is your single-member districts. And so for ISD, we have five single-member districts and two at-large districts. And so the five single-member districts are what we're focusing on in this process. And what we are doing is redrawing those districts to balance out the population as a result of changes in the population. And so every 10 years, we have to look at the population, see how it's changed, and if it's changed to a certain extent, then the law requires that we balance that population out. As you all heard at our last presentation, when Rocky did the change analysis, the most populous district according to the U.S. 2020 Census is Single Member District Two at 67,988. And then our least populous district is Single Member District One at 33,351. So the law says that if the most populous district exceeds the least populous district by more than 10%, then we're required to redistrict. And so in Secura ISD's case, the difference between Single Member District Two and Single Member District One is 103.9%. So we are required by law to go through the redistricting process. And so let's just, a reminder about where we are in the process now. We have talked to you all about the legal requirements and what the law says as far as statutory deadlines are concerned. Rocky came at the last meeting and did a demographic analysis for us. And so now we're at the stage where we need to determine how it is that we want to get input from the community, get input from trustees, and what kind of criteria it is that we want to consider as we are going through the redistricting process and redrawing and drawing these maps. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about the criteria first. As a reminder, Rocky presented to you all a base map at the last meeting. That base map was, was really a way to see, here's what the district would look like if all we were considering is that we need to bring the percentage down from 1.3% to under 10% between District Two and District One. So it kind of was that base map to show you that here's where things start, and then we work our way from there. But there's other criteria that are considered in the redistricting process besides that 10% differential. So that's what I'm going to be talking to you all today so that we can adopt a resolution and have something that's guiding us and guiding the demographers as they are drawing and redrawing these maps. And so I have a list of the criteria here, and I'm going to just briefly break down each of these criteria that we are proposing that the board adopts tonight. And so the, the initial thing is that we have to get the population to be substantially equal amongst all the different single-member districts. That is something that's required by federal law and by state law, is that we avoid overpopulating districts and avoid underpopulated districts. So we need to balance out the, the districts, and what I'm, I'm not saying that we have to have exactly equal population, we just need to make sure that it's substantially equal. And so Texas law also requires that. Texas Education Code specifically states that single-member districts must be as nearly as practical of equal population. And along those same lines, when we're, when we're bringing that populate, that 10% differential, we're trying to get to that 10% differential, we're also going to be balancing out that So the, the next piece of criteria that we will need to be considering is that we are drawing districts that are compact and contiguous. And so what I mean by compact is you have political compactness and you have physical compactness. By political compactness, I'm talking about accounting for political boundaries, so looking at election precincts and polling places and doing our best to keep those, those various things together. And then as far as physical compactness is concerned, it's, there's not really any sort of precise formula or rule for, for this, but what I like to liken it to is that it needs to be, the shapes of the district need to, to make sense, and they, we want to avoid any funny-looking districts. In other words, we don't want a district that looks like a jack-o'-lantern or a donut. We want them to have smooth boundaries and have a smooth geometric shape. And the reason why that's important is because if you have a district that looks kind of wonky, that can indicate that there is some gerrymandering occurring. In other words, we've got a situation where population is being grabbed from different parts of the district in order to manipulate how elections occur within that district. And so the other thing is continuity, and what that means is they need to be connected. The districts need to be connected, and we can't have a district that is broken up or split in half in any way. Easily identifiable boundaries, this is something that we recommend in the criteria because it makes it easy for the public to understand how their district is drawn. So we, so the demographers typically try to keep the boundary lines in line with roads and highways if possible. You know, maybe there's a river or a stream or bodies of water, that's also something that they'll look at, as well as city limits. If possible, they will try to keep the, the district boundaries in line with the city And so I've talked about this when we talked about the legal requirements when it comes to redistricting, but a big thing is that we are avoiding vote dilution and avoiding the retrogression of minority rights. In other words, we want to make sure that we're not drawing a map that we, that would diminish the minority voting strength for a respective district. And one thing that we need to keep in mind, because I know sometimes people hear redistricting and they immediately think about minority voting rights, and that is incredibly important, and it's absolutely something that we consider, but we only consider it to a narrow extent of avoiding violation of the 15th Amendment and Equal Protection Clause. So we can't consider it, race cannot be a predominant factor over traditional redistricting principles such as balancing out population and keeping boundaries compact and contiguous. The next piece of criteria I'm going to talk about is the preservation of incumbent constituency relations. So a candidate for a trustee has to be a resident of the trustee district for which that candidate is seeking, seeking to represent. And so that means that if a trustee no longer resides in a district, then they have to vacate that office. After the redistricting map is adopted, all positions are going to be up for election. So the board can decide how they want that to happen. What we always recommend is that you allow the incumbent trustees to serve the remainder of their term, and then the, the trustee districts will be filled as the staggered terms of the incumbent trustees expire. But if you have a situation where you draw a trustee, a sitting, a current sitting trustee out of their district with these new plans, then that trustee would no longer be able to continue in office. And so that's why we recommend preserving those incumbent constituency relations because no matter what, all of the positions will be up for election. And then another thing that we recommend is maintaining neighborhoods and communities of interest. This is really going to be something where we'll be, we'll really need community input and trustee input. The demographers are going to need that in order to make sure that they're keeping, avoiding splitting neighborhoods, that there are, you know, if there's a, a group of people who have common policies, concerns, then that's something, and, and maybe they would benefit from all being in, in one single-member district, then we'd want to avoid splitting that. But we obviously don't understand the district as, as good as the, the public, the, the community there and the trustees there. And so that's why we'd really be seeking input from you all on that. And then preserving the existing single-member district boundaries. The reason why we recommend keeping in my, in mind how the boundaries are currently drawn is because prior to 2020, 2020 Census, before that, and when 2010, when we went through redistricting during, in 2010, districts were required to submit their proposed plan to the Department of Justice for approval, and the Department of Justice would be reviewing these plans to see whether or not there were any issues of retrogression or vote dilution. That's no longer a requirement anymore. However, we at least know that those plans have gotten that DOJ sign-off, and so that's why we recommend preserving some of those existing boundaries because we know for sure that they've been approved by the Department of Justice as it pertains to retrogression. And then finally, if a school district with 150,000 or more students has, or has a, I'm sorry, if a school district has 150,000 or more students in their average daily attendance, then they are prohibited from splitting the county election precincts. Secura ISD has enrollment numbers that are below that 150,000 threshold. However, we still recommend avoiding splitting county election precincts to the best extent possible unless it's necessary to balance out the population. And so with that, I've talked, I kind of talked really fast, and, and that was a lot of information that I covered. So before I get into the public engagement strategy, I want to make sure I open the floor up if there are any questions from the trustees about the criteria.
No questions.
Great. All right. So let's talk about public engagement strategy. So some ways in which we encourage, or how we engage with the trustees and community in the past for past redistricting is, is one for the board. Obviously, we're, we're getting input from you during these board meetings as well as workshops, but we also offer the opportunity for one-on-ones in which if a trustee would like to meet with, with the attorneys and a demographic team, then we can kind of walk through, here's how your district looks, and, and here's how, you know, your district would change if we moved the boundary lines this way or that way. So it's a great way for the trustees to kind of have that, that one-on-one time with us because I know a lot of times during these meetings, it can be a bit overwhelming to hear all this information all at once. And so we usually get a lot of really good feedback when we have those one-on-one meetings. Also, community meetings are a great, great way for us to get input from both the board and the public. And so then let's talk a bit about how we propose getting that input from the public. Board meetings, of course, are important. We do have a public hearing opportunity mapped out in the timeline that I'm going to talk about, but also town halls. We've had districts have, district-wide town halls, have had virtual town halls. I had one district who did multiple teletown halls, which was a great way to get input, and it allowed thousands of different people from the community to be able to provide input to us. And it's just a great way because everyone doesn't have, may not communicate the same way, and so we want to make sure that we're offering a diversity of opportunities in which the public can engage. So having those different opportunities through town halls, having some single-member district-specific community meetings, so smaller community meetings within a district would be great. Having a redistricting website, which I will talk about in a moment. We offer educational videos, which you can put on your website, and those videos are just us kind of giving you the redistricting one-on-one and breaking it down, which allows the public to get a better understanding of, of what redistricting is because it is a very important, important thing that happens, and it only happens every 10 years. So we want to make sure that people understand what's going on. Surveys are also a great, great way for us to get input from the public. And so Rocky showed you all the, kind of that base map at the last meeting, and what we saw is that the proposed map is going to, the changes are going to be, I think, relatively minor. And so we are not recommending as an extensive of a, a community engagement strategy as we would for a district that may have more major changes to their population. However, having a redistricting website linked to the Secura ISD's homepage is really a great way for the community to be able to access everything that is related to redistricting all in one space. And so we, our, our past clients have had the redistricting presentations on there, they've had all of the proposed maps on there, the timeline, the criteria that we're looking at and the board has adopted, any upcoming community meeting dates, and it also, in some way, there's a, there's an opportunity for the public to provide comments on proposed maps. And so in the past, we've partnered with district staff to, to create some sort of website like that, and so we would recommend that we do that for Secura ISD as well. And then additional engagement, just having those community meetings is really important, especially if there's, within those districts that are having, that are going to be changed or affected by these boundary changes, having those community meetings is something that we recommend. And then having a final public hearing, I'm sorry, final public hearing, and that would be for either the final map or maybe there's two maps that have made it to the end, and so we want to get half the, a public hearing for both of those maps. Having that opportunity for the public to have, to provide some final commentary prior to the board adopting the map. And so I've created a timeline, which is also an attachment to the resolution we'll be adopting tonight if, if, if the board chooses, and that timeline kind of maps out where we are now and then how we get to the final adapt, adoption date. What I'm proposing is that between now, August and October, that we have four to six either board meetings or community meetings or just opportunities for us to get input on specific draft plans. And in addition, during those months, we also have, will have the demographer drafting alternative plans, which they'll start to do that as they get feedback on the current plans that are presented. So we already have Base Plan One, and so Rocky, once we adopt that criteria, Rocky will go back and probably draft another map, which we'll present to you all and get feedback and draft alternative plans based on that. So that's August through October is really coming up with either alternative maps, gaining input from the community, gaining input from the board, and then by November, the goal is to have narrowed the maps down to at least one, I'm sorry, at least two maps, ideally one map, in which we would have a public hearing at that November board meeting to allow the public to comment. And then third, I'm sorry, in December, the board would adopt a final map. And so that will put us in line to make that deadline of January 18, 2023. January 18, 2023 is an important date because that is the first day to file for, for placing a ballot. And so for a candidate to know whether or not they can apply to be on a ballot, they have to know whether or not they meet that residency requirement. So it's essential that we have that map adopted before January 18. February 5, 2023 is the absolute latest in which the, the plan can be adopted, and that's the, the date that's required by law. And then the final date is Election Day, and the elections would occur based on these, these new, the new map that's adopted. And with that, I will open it up again for, for questions from the board.
Thank you, Ms. White. Any questions? Any questions? No questions. Okay.
So with, with that, if we have no questions, then I, I, we just need to, um, approve the ru- resolution that is included in the packet that adopts the criteria and proposed timeline.
Motion to approve.
Second. So I have motion by Mr. Barrera and a second by Mr. Morales.
I'm sorry, I, I have a, a question. The criteria, where is that located?
We supposed to read that resolution?
Right, but, I mean, we can't see it on our screen right now.
I'm s- I'm sorry. It's in your agenda, but I can actually go back to the, um, slide that listed on.
Okay, perfect. I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mena.
No problem. So I do have a motion on the floor. It was the first by Mr. Barrera and the second by Mr. Morales. If there's no further questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. White.
Thank you.
Okay, item J, consider approval of resolution of the SUCOR Independent School District regarding an extension of local emergency paid sick leave for personnel for the 2022, 2023 school year. Presenter, Mr. Trustee Paul Guerra.
Thank you, Mr. Mena. As COVID is still going on here in our city, in our school district, it has come to our attention that COVID-19 is still present in our schools. Our students and our employees are still being exposed to COVID-19, even though we continue to observe COVID-19 protocols. I'm asking the Board of Trustees to approve the attached resolution that will give our employees up to five days of pay leave if needed. So we'd like to make a motion to prove the five days if needed for the COVID pay.
Discussion.
Ms. Vena?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Barrera.
You know what? I'm going to recommend that we go six days and the, the math that figures, figures for me, when I look at it is, because CDC is saying five days, right, for the recovery. So when we take into consideration the weekend, that's already two days. So let's say an employee gets sick twice because of COVID. And obviously it's going to depend on when they get sick. You have three days during the week. You still have two days from the weekend. So that's one instant that you have your, your time to recover and get better. Now, let's say you get sick a second time. You still got those additional three days left, plus hopefully the weekend to still recover and get back to work. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna propose six days. And that, that's kind of my reasoning behind it. You know, we got to take care of our employees. If we take care of our employees, they're the ones taking care of our kids, looking out after our kids. And we don't want to spread the bug anymore.
Back in 2021 in January, we did the resolution, CDC guidelines for 10 days, because that was CDC guidelines. And then we changed it back in October, back to five days. And then we did amendment back in June, 2007. I'm okay with, with the six days. I mean, we could give them 10 days. I'll go with the 10 days. But I was just saying the five days for the CDC guidelines, but I'm okay with the six days. But, uh, there was a resolution in our board package and it did stay for five days. Would we have to change that to amend it if we make a motion for six days? Okay.
Mr. Guerra, you have to.
No, there was just a motion for the five days, but if, if you would like to make a motion for the six days, because there was a motion as far as the five days for the COVID, but if you'd like to amend it and go six days, we could take that motion.
I'll make the motion for the six days.
Second.
Can we clarify quick questions? Still have some questions, discussion?
Yeah, we're still in the discussion, guys. So any other questions at this time?
Just to clarify, is, is that for vaccinated, non-vaccinated employees?
We can't do vaccine, non-vaccine. Yeah, so it has to be both. It'll be either or. Whether they're vaccinated or not.
So it was in a board package and this would be for either or, vaccinated or non-vaccinated.
Any other questions or discussion?
Um, did it covers all employees, right?
It covers all employees, yes, sir.
Whether they accrue leave or not, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Y'all are making this law. You're crazy. Um, I, I, the resolution has some different terminology here. And I think in fairness, to make sure, because there is sort of the concept of gifting of public funds, right? So, I mean, y'all are awesome and you care about your employees, but you do have to make sure that within guidelines and, and legalities, that you're not gifting more, you know, beyond. Five is pretty standard. So it sounds like you're wanting to kind of consider six. Uh, you can always bring that back to the next thing. You could pass this resolution as it is now with the five. And it's, it certainly is within, that's kind of the, a standard thing. It's got some, um, some terminology here that talks about some guidelines. And so I think that's important that you also, you know, stick to what you have in front of you right now. But if you want something else considered, you could always bring that back and amend that resolution at the next meeting. Or you could hold off on this. And this could apply retroactively as well. So those are some ideas, rather than just start brainstorming regarding changes to the resolution that's in place right now.
Yes, well, right now I have a motion on the floor.
That's right.
For six days. So do we need to rescind that or?
Did someone rescind the five days?
No.
Okay, so that's on the floor first.
So I would like to make a motion to rescind the five days and we make a motion for six days.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Paul Guerra to rescind the five days and, and to do the six days and a second by Mr. Barrera. Is that correct?
Mr. Mena, could I just ask a question of our attorney Wesley? If they, since the CDC guidelines are five, uh, the recommendation is for six days, would it be wise to include in the motion or to amend the mo- amend the motion, six days but no more than five days used on any one occurrence? That way it preserves those days. If they get sick a second time, they could use three and three, four and two, five and one, whatever it breaks down to. But in no incident are they using more than the five days, uh, recommended by CDC. Would that, would that help prevent the possible gift of public funds?
That, I would, I would feel comfortable with that as well. There's also some provision in here that discusses, um, the fact that the superintendent, um, that there are specific delegations that you have, but that you really do have some authority to sort of, you know, oversee that. But I do, I do like that. I think that would pass, pass legal muster certainly.
Go ahead, repeat that. Just don't move or clear or?
Okay, wait, wait a minute.
So I think we go back to Mr. Guerra, Guerra to, um, amend the motion, six days, but no more than five days on any one incidence.
Hey, Dr. Carmen, shall I rescind the motion from five days and go six days?
Second.
Okay, whatever Mr. Paul Guerra just said. And a second by Mr. Barrera. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We love you guys. Remember that, okay? Okay, executive order, um, executive session. A meeting is to be closed for consultation for le- with legal counsel relating an inner intervention in the Public Utility Commission of Texas, PCU, proceeding, PCU docket number 5219, SOAH, docket number 4473212606, application of El Paso Electric Company to change rates and to receive reports regarding the status of L. Hernandez versus SISD to discuss personal and real estate matters and proposal to terminate the term contract of the chief of police for good cause and to consider administrative recommendations for the principal position at Bill Seibert School, assistant principal positions at Captain Walter E. Clark Middle School, Options High School, Sunridge Middle School, Desert Wind School under the Texas Government Code Section 551071, 551072, and 551074. I have a time of 7:37. Or eight, sorry, correction, 8:37.
Okay. We're back from exec inception. The time is 10:11. New business. 11A, Discussion and Possible Action Related to Intervention in the Public Utility Commission of Texas, PCU Process and PCU Docket Number 5219 SOAH. Docket Number 473-21-2606. Application of El Paso Electric Company to Change Rates. Our legal counsel?
Members of the Board, to take action to approve a settlement in this matter, I recommend that the Board consider a motion to approve the settlement agreement in the Intervention in Public Utility Commission of Texas proceeding, Public Utility Commission Docket Number 52195, State Office of Administrative Hearing Docket Number 473-21-2606, as discussed in closed session.
So moved.
So, motion by Mr. Barrera, a second by Mr. Morales. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next agenda is Item 11B, Discussing Possible Action to Approve Proposed Settlement in L. Hernandez versus SISD, Case Number 2020DCV3887. Our legal counsel?
Members of the Board, to take action to approve the settlement agreement in this matter, I recommend that the Board consider a motion to approve the settlement agreement in L. Hernandez versus Socorro ISD, Cause Number 2020-DCV3887, as discussed in closed session.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Mr. Morales, and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 11C, Discussing and Possible Action on the Proposal to Terminate the Term Contract of the Chief of Police for Good Cause. Presenter?
Members of the Board, to take action to propose the termination of the Chief of Police, I recommend that the Board consider a motion to propose the termination of the term contract of the Chief of Police for Good Cause, as discussed in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Barrera, a second by Mr. Morales. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, two to four. Next item. Do you consider approval of administrative recommendations? Dr. Nick Carmen?
President Mena, members of the Board, Administration recommends Rebecca Parada to assume the role and responsibilities as the new principal of Bill's cyber pre-K8 school.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So, motion by Mr. Barrera, a second by Mrs. Nakana. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
President Mena, members of the Board, Administration recommends Lorenzo Lopez to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Clark Middle School.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Morales, and a second by Mr. Castiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
President Mena, members of the Board, Administration recommends Raquel Ferreira to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Options High School.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Morales, and a second by Mr. Barrera. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
President Mena and members of the Board, Administration recommends Elizabeth Huerta to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Sun Ridge Middle School.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Guerra, a second by Mr. Morales. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
President Mena and members of the Board, Administration recommends Eliana Castillo to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Sun Ridge Middle School.
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion by Mr. Guerra, a second by Mr. Morales. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
President Mena and members of the Board, Administration recommends Elizabeth Saucero to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Desert Wind Pre-K8 School.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Barrera, a second by Mr. Morales. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And at this time, if there's no more questions, I will adjourn the meeting. The time is 10:16.